There are speaker request forms to the left of the dais. Please fill out a request for the agenda number of the item you wish to speak and hand it to the secretary. Cell phones and electronic devices. At this time, we would ask that any member of the audience that has a cellphone or other electronic device, that you either turn it off or turn the ringer to silence. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway so the meeting will not be disrupted. The consent calendar. Items one through four have been placed on the consent calendar and may be considered as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by a planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of the planning commission are recommendations to city council. The city council will make the final decision. The Rapid City Planning Commission items, excuse me, actions on these items are final unless any party appeals the decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the community planning and development services department by the close of business on the seventh calendar day following action of the planning commissions. Are there any items, one through four, that staff would like removed from the consent calendar?
Just a clarification, it's items one through three that are on consent. Item four is a non-consent item.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Are there any items, one through three, that an audience member would like removed? Motion was made to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Dennis made the motion and Jan seconded the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Item number four?
Consider your consent calendar and act on items one through four. My error, there was an item added, and that is item number four. And it is to go forward with the recommendation as posed in the staff report. My apologies.
To discuss for? We will now address item number for Patsy, would you please?
Good morning. The item before you, my apologies for adding it late, I was on vacation. Anyway, the item before you today is to remove our four urban systems projects from our current statewide transportation improvement program. Those particular items are funded with the urban systems dollars, which is a federal pass-through from the state for specific projects that are just for Rapid City. We get about $1.5 million every year from Federal Highway, the state provides that match. And annually, the state offers every community an opportunity to opt out of the federal funding program by switching federal dollars for state dollars. And our Public Works Department is very interested in doing that. There are some benefits to doing that. What we see is we'll still get the money, but we won't have to provide any kind of federal procedures along with the associated projects. So you will be seeing a couple more amendments coming through. Actually, our current draft for next year's tip is on your next agenda. But we will be amending the capital improvements program, and there'll be a funding agreement to get those federal, those state, now there'll be state dollars. But that'll be coming forward within the next couple planning commission meetings.
Anyone have questions? Karen? Or John?
Patsy, if you don't mind, I'll ask Patsy a question. Patsy, when I read that, I'm slightly confused. We get the dollars from the federal government currently?
Mm-hmm.
One point five million?
Mm-hmm.
And does the state match that one point five million today?
No, the state, the state provides the local match, which is about 20 percent of that.
Okay.
So, you know, they're gonna work on paying us out for all of our urban systems dollars, and it's about nine, 10 million right now in the pot. But it'll be at the 80 percent rate. But with that, staff has identified that, you know, there's a ton of savings that go, that are associated with not using federal dollars on projects.
Okay, so, in that case, now the state's gonna provide the entire one point five million?
Well, not, it's 80 percent of that.
And who pays the 20 percent?
There will be no 20 percent anymore match. It'll just be dollars that we get to use. So, you know, generally, the cost of the project will lower because, you know, there are specific costs associated with, you know, the additional requirements. And so, you know, we're still moving forward with the projects, but they're not gonna cost nearly as much.
Okay, so, because the cost will be less when we just use state dollars, we can do the same project at 80 percent as we used to do at 100 percent?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
John?
So, a federal contract for the funds will cost us less than 250,000 for the same project?
You know, it really kinda depends, but generally, based on my understanding, you know, it's, it's, there is a larger cost to provide, to do the projects with the federal dollars.
Because of compliance with the federal strings that come with the money?
Exactly.
And Public Works thinks that they can do these projects without the 20 percent on 10 million, that'd be 2 million bucks.
They are very competent.
I'm from the government, I'm here to help you. Thanks, Patsy.
Dennis?
Could you explain a little bit more where the savings of the 2 million dollars comes from?
Well, for example, we're working on, one of the projects is the Anamosa Street expansion, right near Maple. We have to acquire that particular, one of those properties on that corner. And because of the additional requirements, when we're using federal dollars, those costs are quite a bit higher. It will not cost us nearly as much to acquire the property and to go through the acquisition process if we use state dollars, from my understanding. I don't have those numbers, you know, I don't have those numbers, but I know that our Public Works staff is very interested in moving forward with using state dollars.
If I may follow up?
Yes.
You know, that's a lot of money to leave on the table, just because of some federal rules and regulations. And we currently deal with federal rules and regulations anyway, in some of our other street projects and transportation programs. It's difficult for me to understand how we can use state, and I presume there's gotta be some local in there someplace. And if there's not, but it just seems strange that we would just use state dollars when we have such a limited amount of state dollars in the Department of Transportation anyway. So, I'm very confused about this request, and I would probably not support it.
Carla?
Thank you. I'm a little bit familiar with the Anamosa Street project and can give you a couple details about the federal rules that would apply if federal dollars were involved, and which won't apply if it's state dollars. The acquisition of the property will be larger, we have to buy more property, and that's pretty, it's a, and it's apartment, apartment complex that doesn't look like it's very valuable, but it actually is very valuable. So, there's a substantial cost to using our state law to acquire that property over, using the federal laws. Well, there are federal rules related to relocation of tenants whose rental property is obtained by local governments, that would be substantial cost to the city in terms of dollars and staff time. That will be avoided if state money is used instead of federal money. So, those are some, two examples of, I know, some very significant savings that I'm aware of on this one project, where using state dollars to, instead of federal dollars, would eliminate some work and hassle and cost.
Patsy, or Carla, whoever can answer this question. If we do this, go forward with this, and this is for one year, five years? Do you know how long this?
I'm guessing it will be always now.
Always? If, for some reason down the road, it looks like this is not correct and we should go back to having federal dollars matching with the state and the way it is today, can we reverse that? Is the federal government gonna allow us to reverse that?
Well, actually, this is an agreement with the state. And, and yes, this is an annual event that DOT has offered the communities for quite some time. And I think, you know, with the issues that we found on the Anamosa Street project, there's a real good chance that we'll, we'll continue with that funding agreement.
Okay, and I assume that that information will be given to the CIP committee so they understand the savings that we acquire because we're doing this?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a way that the planning commission can hear that also, just at least a summary so we know that our decision is a valid one?
I will make sure that you guys get the information as well.
Great, thank you.
Jan?
I'd like also to see, to know what federal requirements we're avoiding. It seems to me on this project, at least as Carla spoke, it means we don't have to pay to relocate the people whose building we're taking, buying. If we use state money, but federal money would require us to do that, then I'm not so sure that's the best use. I mean, there's a reason for that federal requirement. And it seems like an altruistic reason, and seems like something if I were living there, I'd, I'd want the city to be doing rather than avoiding it for monetary reasons. And I don't know what, it's, it's hard for me to vote on something when I don't know what it is we're avoiding, what rules of the federal government we're avoiding. Because many of those rules I probably would agree with if I knew what they were.
I believe that there are still rules that we'll have to follow, they're just based on state rules, not federal rules.
John? Oh, Jan?
I have less confidence in the state than I do in the federal government, sorry.
John?
Jan, that's hard to follow. What I would like to do is, instead of after the fact, what we saved, I'd really like to approve this by knowing what we're saving per project. When Carla started talking, I'm familiar with that property and that deal. Under the federal rule, if I understood Carla, we have to purchase that property, those apartments.
I think we're still gonna have to purchase it anyway.
Yeah, under, I'm hesitant to give too much information because we are negotiating with the property owner. But the amount of property we would have to purchase would be greater than, under the federal rules, than what we would prefer to purchase.
Well, it just seems that 2 million dollars is too much to say we're gonna leave on the table without knowing that we're saving that, or that that's a good decision. So, do we have, are we under a motion? No, we are not?
We're still, we were still asking questions.
Is there a critical timeframe on this, Patsy?
If we want this year's allocation to be paid out, we have to have the motion, the resolution approved before the first of July.
Can we pick and choose among the projects that are included in the 10 million dollar pot? Or do we, is it take them all or take none?
I guess that would be your choice to make that recommendation to council. You know, if you, if you don't want the Anamosa Street project in there, then...
Well, actually, I'm pretty comfortable leaving the Anamosa Street in there. I think I understand what that's all about. But I don't know about the other projects at all, about whether there's too much hassle to accept the money on a break-even basis, or whether that's gonna curtail the project in any way. Or that the city is gonna have to go to its own funds for that, for projects, or that the projects just get moved out on the CIP calendar. So, I'm just saying that if we're gonna approve them project by project, I'd really like to see the project total cost, anticipated savings if we go through the state versus federal, what the additional federal cost would be. And that would be easier for me to approve, and I think consistent with what Dennis and Jan said in their comments. So, my motion is to continue this the next meeting and have more information.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
A question for Patsy. Did I understand you correct that you need this acted on by the city by July 1st?
By the council.
So, if you continue this, then it wouldn't go to council until after July 1st, and then we'd lose this year's opportunity. So, perhaps it would be better if you brought forward a recommendation, one way or the other, and then that would let council make the final decision. I'd hate to put you in that spot, John, but otherwise, she's gonna miss that deadline if you continue it.
And your recommendation?
Notwithstanding the deadline, it's still funds that I think, I don't wanna vote against it, and I can't vote for it until I have more information.
I'm gonna take some more comments. Dennis, do you have another comment?
No, I'm definitely in agreement with John. You know, when we relocate individuals, that does take a long time, and I know that. Having purchased property that had occupants in there. But we also have a housing shortage, and those people, as Jan pointed out, do need to have some assurance that we're going to have a place for them to live as we develop this project. So, my, you know, if we could say in this motion for the city council to consider that we would accept the Anamosa project with state funds only, as that seems to be the critical issue, I would maybe be in consideration of it, but I'm really confused.
I have some other speakers. Karen?
Thank you. I think the planning commission, I can tell, is a little apprehensive about doing this, but I also understand that deadline. If we send this to council without recommendation, then they can make that decision still and get you in the timeframe, and we have another body that looks at this and can look at some numbers?
Correct.
I'm gonna make a substitute motion that take this to council without recommendation.
Oh, you don't have a second for that?
Oh, well, I'll make a...
You can be the lead-off batter.
Thank you.
Karen will make a motion.
I'll make a motion, thank you.
Okay, state your motion, though.
I make a motion that we take the request, item number four, to city council without recommendation. The legal, I don't have it in front of me, so...
John seconded it. Okay, all those in favor? Discussion?
Yeah. That could be part of my motion, thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion, taking it to council with no recommendation? All those say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
And I will get all of you the same information so that you have it available. Thank you.
We are now ready for the regular agenda items. Item number five?
Item number five is a major amendment to a plan development to reduce the side yard setback from eight feet to five feet out at, across our country estates. We are recommending that this item be continued to your June 25th planning commission meeting. We've had some issues with the Journal where they have failed to publish the legals on several of the items on the agenda today. We've had this issue a few times over the last year. We've been in conversation with them to ensure that it stops and doesn't continue. You will see on the dais a letter from the neighbor in opposition to this request. We assured them that we would get you the letter today, even though the item won't be discussed until June 25th, so that you'd have enough time to read it and think about it. So, with that, we are recommending that item number four, it be continued to June 25th?
Five.
Or five, rather.
Five, yeah.
Looking at an old agenda still.
Karen made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
And Jan seconded the motion to move this item to June 25th. All of those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item number six?
Thank you. Item number six is 15 RZ 010, it's a request to rezone property from Park Forest District to Low Density Residential District. Further down on your agenda, you're gonna see a discussion item regarding the potential for an ordinance amendment to allow bed and breakfasts as a conditional use in the Park Forest District. This rezone is the catalyst for that discussion. The applicants have requested that in lieu, or in anticipation of the discussion forthcoming, they would like to have this item continued to the June 25th planning commission meeting. And that's staff's recommendation at this time.
John made the motion to move to the June 25th meeting, is there a second?
Aye.
Thank you. Galen seconded. All those in favor? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number seven?
Thank you. Item number seven is 15 RZ 011, a request to rezone property from Neighborhood Commercial District to General Commercial District on approximately 1.7 acres of property located northwest of the intersection of Elm Avenue and Fairmont Boulevard, Rapid City. Let me take you through some slides. View of the property, you can see its own neighborhood commercial district. It is located in an area that is primarily single-family residential, low-density neighborhood. There is some medium-density residential districts located to the east of the property. It's currently developed multifamily housing. An aerial view of the property, as I said before, single-family residential, multifamily residential located to the east. View of the signpost on the property, the area is currently developed with a retail center comprised mostly of neighborhood-serving retail and service uses, as well as a convenience store with gas sales. A look, sorry, look westbound on Fairmont, including the existing signage, at the intersection of Elm and Fairmont, across the street of Fairmont, looking at the single-family residential to the south of the property. On this, on the north side, or the northwest side of the property, looking at, I believe it's Maple and Fairland, or Fairlane. Single-family residential located across the street on the north side of the property. That's the multifamily residential on the east side of the property. Elm Avenue to the north, looking south, and again, the intersection. Look on the property, the existing retail center, it's a variety of uses, including a diner, a uniform shop, a beauty salon, and you can see the gas station there, and here in this shot, too. Look on the north side of the property, additional retail space with existing parking as it Staff took considerable time to look into both the criteria and the zoning ordinance regarding a rezone request, as well as the comprehensive plan. Some things that we noted, that request to rezone this property from Neighborhood Commercial to General Commercial was brought forward to city council in 2003. That request was denied, council citing at the time that the increased intensity of use was not appropriate for the residential nature or character of the neighborhood. With regard to the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance, the Neighborhood Commercial District is intended to provide for local services to an immediate residential or immediate neighborhood. The General Commercial District would typically be more for citywide uses, citywide purposes. And we found that this, the existing zoning district served the neighborhood, whereas the General Commercial District had the potential to not, to pull in traffic and pull in uses that would be better served in a more concentrated commercial district. In terms of potential adverse impacts, we found that the increased intensity of use could lead to adverse impacts to the street, area, street network, the nature of the existing uses in the area being low-density neighborhood. And we also found that the proposed amendment was not in, was not consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. With that, staff is bringing forth a recommendation that this application be denied. The increased intensity of uses that could potentially result from the increase, the change in zoning could have an adverse impact on the neighborhood, and would not be in line with the development goals of the city. Staff is available for questions at this time.
John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I noticed in the report also that the property is located in the 100-year floodplain?
It is. We were mildly surprised to see. You want more information on that, I would direct you to Ted Johnson, Public Works.
Ted?
Yes, sir, it is, a portion of it.
Where does it?
And it's kinda strange, 'cause it backs up, it's kind of a backflow area that comes back from the north and to the east. But yes, based on the FEMA map, it is in the floodplain.
Really?
Yeah.
Do we have any history approving commercial in the 100-year floodplain, for or against?
I do not have direct knowledge of that. Perhaps Vicki might have some?
Vicki?
There is properties throughout the city who in part or whole are designated in the 100-year federally designated floodplain. So long as they're not in the floodway, they do not have to be zoned flood hazard district. Off the top of my head, I can't cite specific locations where we would rezone to General Commercial, but if we looked, I'm sure there are general commercial properties in our city that, especially those that are along Omaha and other areas, that do have some federally designated floodplain on them. I would think down at Omaha and La Crosse especially, some of those car dealerships that have got floodplain on them.
Follow-up, please?
Yes.
The reason I ask is, I'm a little bit surprised to hear it also, but if it is, didn't we pass some ordinances for building in the floodplain or several years ago? And updated that?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, again, if you're in the floodway, then it would require a conditional use permit to allow a structure in the floodway, and a special exception to the flood area regulations. This property wouldn't qualify for that since there's no floodway on the property, and there's a difference. Within floodplain, you have the fringe and the floodway. This would be in the fringe and not the floodway.
And our further development in the floodplain, thank you, has no effect on the city's overall flood insurance rating by FEMA?
It could. It's our understanding from this applicant that there would be no additional structural development as a part of this, it would be using the existing structures that are there. And I think that, as we looked at it, as Rob said, we were surprised to see that it was in the 100-year federally designated floodplain. After this last couple weeks, it's completely understandable, 'cause there's definitely a lot of runoff specific to this area. But certainly, our criteria, as we looked at it, for purposes of bringing forward a recommendation of denial, goes more to the fact that this property is one of those rare neighborhood commercial properties that is completely surrounded by residential. It's not in a strip corridor of general commercial. It's, it's not in an area that handles large commercial traffic. This is primarily residential traffic coming in and out of the neighborhood.
I concur with the recommendation by staff, and the reason I asked about the flood is because I'm sure the city is aware at this time that they're updating...
that they're updating all of the federal flood rules. And they're extensive, and they'll go into effect later this year. And so I think probably when we find that we're in those things that will affect the FEMA rating on our community, which affects the price that people have to pay for flood insurance, that we're mindful of that in some of our analysis. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Vicki.
Cheryl? If you'd go to, over to the, and identify yourself and address, please?
Good morning. My name is Cheryl Erdman, and I live in Robbinsdale, just north of the Circle S Plaza. And I am totally against this. You know, the crime rate in that little area, just with that little tiny area there, is already increasing. And we've had numerous robberies happening down there at the gas station. Just the other day, we had the cops down there stopping somebody, but that's irrelevant to this particular thing. But I just wanted to let you know that as a Robbinsdale person, living within close proximity, I walk down there all the time, mail my mail, go to the convenience store when I need things. I do not want this to be a commercial, what do they call, General Commercial District, because I don't want to have, to worry about the type of clientele that's going to frequent that area. I did call as soon as I got this letter in and inquired as to why they wanted it rezoned. And with what they told me, I am totally against it. And I've spoken to my neighbors, all the way around me, and they're all within, with me, against this. They couldn't be here this morning, I guess it was too early for them. But I just wanted to let you know that I am totally against it, along with my husband.
Thank you.
Oh, and as far as the flooding goes, it's generally just down on, what is it, Fairlane? Fairlane is where we, because we sit up there on the hill there and right across from the apartments, which are low-income apartments, so, anyway. We watch the cars come through there, and there is flooding down there, but it's never been to the extent where it's been really, 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 really bad. And we've been there for 20-plus years. Okay, thank you.
Karen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with the staff report also. This area is, is one of the few in town that really is a Neighborhood Commercial area, and it's not suited for General Commercial. The traffic would increase, and I think, I think the traffic really is pretty much residential traffic that goes through there. And I know, I know a lot of people who live there, and their kids walk to the store down there. And I just think this should remain a Neighborhood Commercial area. So my motion is to approve the request to deny, and that's my motion.
Is there a second? Dennis seconded the motion. And I want to make a comment. I feel really in support of denial, too, because this is my part of town, and I do know the traffic conditions, and I do know the neighborhood climate. And this is truly a thing that should be denied. Anyone else wish to speak?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
That would be me. Just for point of clarification to the motion maker, I think that it is very important that we cite that upon review of the criteria set forth for a rezoning application, it's the findings of the planning commission that this request doesn't meet the criteria, and as such, a recommendation to deny was brought forward.
That's her motion. And Dennis totally agrees. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item number eight, please.
Excuse me, sorry. Item number eight is 15 PD 15. Major amendment to the plan development to allow for sorority housing to be located on property, zone, high-density residential district. As Vicki brought up previously, due to publication errors from the Journal, we request this item be continued to the June 25th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting.
Karen made the motion, Dennis seconded the motion, to move to June 25th meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Number nine?
Thank you. As I mentioned previously, we had a request for a rezone, to rezone property from low-density residential neighborhood to Park, or, I'm sorry, from Park Forest District to low-density residential neighborhood. During review of the application, or the applicants intended that they were going to be bringing forward a conditional use permit to allow bed and breakfast to be located on the property, once the rezone was effective. During review of the application, staff came to the conclusion that there were perhaps some instances where a bed and breakfast may be in appropriate use in the Park Forest District, given the nature of our local economy and the nature of some of the larger, more isolated lots that are located within the city that are zoned Park Forest Resident, or Park Forest District. We could see instances where allowing bed and breakfasts as a conditional use might be appropriate, given the ability to have some control over, say, the number of bedrooms or the access control hours of operation. And so what staff is doing, asking of you this morning is to direct us to bring forward an ordinance amendment to allow a bed and breakfast as a conditional use within the Park Forest District. And we're available for any questions that you might have.
Karen has a question. And she seconded it. Jan made the motion, Karen seconded it, to direct the staff to look at these issues. Karen?
Thank you. I think this is an appropriate thing to do. It gives us a chance to see what's going to go in there. So we, we're not wholesale saying, if you're in Park Forest, you can do that. And, and I know this particular request is a nice piece of property, and it would be a beautiful place for bed and breakfast. And to have to rezone it just to do that, it seems odd, I guess. And, and so I, I think this is a good idea, and I'd like to see that us look at the request to rezone, or the change in the rezoning criteria, just to see if that works for us.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We found it very strange, when we were looking, trying to assist these individuals with their request, we found it very strange that Park Forest District didn't allow a bed and breakfast as a conditional use. It's allowed as a conditional use in low-density residential, medium-density, and even high-density. With Park Forest, you have a minimum three-acre lot size. And that typically indicates that these properties will be more remote. This kind of use would be less intrusive to the neighborhood. There may be more area for ample parking. So to us, it just made sense. And we were certainly hoping for the support from you as the planning commission today, so that we can make it easier for those that do have these beautiful properties that are remote, to come forward with these requests without having to rezone to low-density residential, which in turn could indicate that someone down the road could then further subdivide that property, which would not be appropriate for the neighborhood.
Thank you, Vicki. Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, John? Motion passed. Yes, John? Can't hear you.
Talking to myself. Elder moment. In the, the city, there's a discussion ongoing about the soils expansion issues, which have come before us in discussions, and building lot approval. Amanda, I don't know where we are on this at the council level, but this is part of the plat approval process that comes, the lowest lot, the... Carla, maybe you've got some update on this? I know that the committee that's working on this has had several meetings. And with all the rain we've had this spring, I'm guessing that expansive soils are something that everybody's dealing with. Where's the city on what they want to do with this?
Well, the, the specific thing before the council that you're referring to were changes in the residential code, which is the building code for one- and two-family residences. And the, in particular, the requirements related to getting a building permit or, you know, having your building be approved by Building Services. It's a little different than the plating process, but that's the mechanism that we're looking at. Council had before it a proposed amendment to that concerning these soils, requiring additional documentation from a soils engineer, possibly an engineer drawing in cases where there was a concern. Council continued that, I think, until maybe the first meeting in July. Andrea's shaking her head, but that's right. The first meeting in July, to give time for the proponents of the additional requirement, which is some homeowners and a local attorney who litigates these cases to work with the home builders to try to come to a compromise. I checked with Brad a couple of days ago, and he had not heard what the status is of those conversations. I haven't been directly involved with this more recent phase of it. So I guess I, what I would say is I think there are conversations, and it's intended to come before council with their recommendation in July.
My understanding of the discussion from the builder's point is that the cost to have that soil evaluated as part of the plat approval is going to cost somebody some money, either when they purchase the lot and have to engineer the soil, and hiring an engineer to provide that study. So it's cost versus the actual end product to a consumer down the line. Is that?
I think that's fair to say, you know-
Where the battle lines are?
Yeah, the homeowners say, I've had $150,000 damage to my house. The builders say it'll be an extra $2,000 for every home we build. So I think that's where the, the conversation is taking place.
And then a follow-up question, if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
We also heard from some people here, months ago, about when the plat is approved, that the last lot, or the lowest lot sold, all of the lots, have some kind of site elevation, so that it works with the drainage that's approved with the overall plat. In other words, when the city brings a plat to us for development, the drainage has been overseen and recommended, but when the individual lots go on, there's no requirement on each lot to drain, to the plat drainage. Am I stating that correctly? Vicki, do you know where we are on that?
We did have some conversation internally about that, too. Because obviously, when you have the developer come in, and part of their drainage plan for the subdivision improvements is to use the side yard swales to get the lot drainage to the street, and then the builder comes in later and says, hey, I can level this out and give my client a little bigger backyard, there's a conflict. And so we're looking at using the development agreement when subdivision improvements are being put in place as the tool to keep the developer connected to the project, to ensure that that design feature gets maintained as the builders are building the sites. I don't think that we've come to any completion on that, but it's certainly something that's being discussed.
Well, there couldn't be a better time for us to be talking about these things, because right now, we have a lot of people in town that are dealing with those very issues. And I would guess not very happy people about that. So I don't want to put more hurdles or cost in front of developers, but on the other hand, this just seems like something that ought to be approved at the time the plat goes through, and that there's some follow-up from the city to make sure the last lot purchased doesn't become the retaining pond for the development.
And Madam Chair, just to follow up to that, certainly, if there is an added cost of a couple thousand even for each lot, to ensure that, that this issue is addressed, that's a far less expense than someone who's having to pay for damages because of drainage issues.
Amanda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just to back up to John's conversation with Carla concerning where the expansion soil discussion is at this time, from the council's perspective, a lot of discussion, just to let the planning commissioners know, from the city council's position, there was a lot of discussion as far as understanding how that would be implemented and oversaw by the city as well. So just to get an agreement between the Home Builders Association and, you know, some, some interested parties who have had very disastrous results from expansion soil based on their residential properties. And again, as Vicki had stated, the cost to fix those is a lot more expensive than the upfront cost to actually put in the engineer feeling compaction. That's the discussion that's going on. The city council is also asking for clarification on how the city, or where the city, would intercede itself in order to make sure that things are being followed, that the city council approves. So I, I think, and I hope, that that's part of that discussion that's going on as the expansion soils are being considered, too, before it comes before city council in July.
Thanks, Amanda. Vicki, anything else? Any other items? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Dennis, Dennis made the motion, and Jan seconded during the meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.